Three, regular meeting. Call the meeting to order. We have Commissioner Huber, Commissioner McGrath absent, and Commissioner Peters not here currently. We do not have a quorum at this point, so we're just going to continue on with the agenda.
Okay.
Approval of the minutes, we will table that until the next meeting or until Commissioner Peters arrives to look at that. So, public hearing, we'll open the public hearing up. This is to amend City Code Chapter 154, Park Dedication Fees. And John Hinsman with the report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commissioners. So I'm going to give a brief introduction here on what we're looking to do tonight. We have an amendment before us to Chapter 154 of the City Code pertaining to the subdivision ordinance. As part of the subdivision ordinance, we have a requirement that park dedication be completed upon the subdivision of a new property. So it's kind of an unusual thing that it's under a land use control but really falls under park and recreation jurisdiction on the application end of it. So when we have a subdivision come forward, we will make a recommendation, or the Park and Recreation Commission will make a recommendation as to how park dedication is to be satisfied. Generally, it's done in one of two ways. It's done with physical land that's dedicated, or it's done as what we term cash in lieu of land, which is a payment with no physical land dedicated. What we've had in place right now is a system that has not been updated for at least 15 years. And at that 15-year mark, we did some configurations on how the amounts of the cash in lieu of land amount were factored, but really nothing else. So it's been some time since we have looked at this one. Chris Jenkins, our Park and Recreation Director, is here. He has spent some time looking at this from a different perspective than what we have presently in our code, has worked together with our committees of council and as well as the city attorney to draft a new version of our park dedication fees. So we have before you tonight is a presentation on that. Actually, we have before you tonight is to hold the public hearing on the ordinance amendment and then provide any discussions or feedback. At this point, since we do not have a quorum, we wouldn't be able to make a formal recommendation, but we certainly can pass along comments to the city council. So I'll leave it over to Chris.
Commissioners, as John said, Chris Jenkins, the Parks and Recreation Director here in Hastings. And as John referenced, the park dedication fees or park dedication, the ordinance has not changed since 2004, if memory serves correct. And at that time, it was adjusted kind of in a very basic form. It took into account the current fair market value of undeveloped residential land and generally grabbed 10% as the reasonable estimate of physical land that could be dedicated. At any rate, we have gone through almost 20 years now without updating this ordinance and/or land dedication and fees that come along with it. And as John mentioned, there's two different ways, physical land dedication or cash in lieu. There's also the combination of those two. Parks and Recreation Commission makes a recommendation, city council ultimately decides what that will be. What we have done is looked at a variety of different ways to calculate park dedication needs for our community. And what this ordinance does, it really ties the park dedication to Hastings-specific data. For one instance, we have 700 acres of parkland. We have 22,303 people, based on the 2021 census estimates from Met Council. So that equates to a certain number of acres per person, right? So that's the level of service that Hastings provides for parklands, period. And we're unique in that. We're not going to be the same as Cottage Grove. We won't be the same as Apple Valley. We won't be the same as Cannon Falls. So this is very, very specific to Hastings. We just happen to have a lot of parks and a lot of park acres. And I think our residents know that, and they choose to be here for some of those reasons. There's state statute that you have to follow. Park dedication funds can only be used for the acquisition of parklands, the development of parklands, the redevelopment of parklands, to include trails, natural and open spaces, and the traditional parks, playgrounds, ballfields, those sorts of things. It can also be used for planning purposes, specifically related to those land items. All of those funds that are collected from developers go into a dedicated fund, can only be used for those purposes. So really, what we've done with this formula is taken that Hastings-specific data, and here's a formula. It's very transparent, and it's very specific to Hastings. We've also hired, we did hire a land appraisal company to give us a study that studied residential developable land in Hastings. Ultimately, it turns into three categories, low density, medium density, and high density. And they put together some values based on that. That's in the study. Staff eventually will come to city council with a recommendation on what we think is reasonable within that. But we have that dataset as well. So there's a lot that goes into it. I've been wrapped up in it for over 10 years now, so I can probably answer a lot of questions if you have them, but I often leave out things because I've been so wrapped up into it for so many years and looked at it from a variety of different angles. So with that, I can answer any questions that you might have, or at least do my best.
Okay. Thanks. This is a public hearing, so we'll go ahead and go with that first. Is there anyone here that wishes, we'll open the public hearing first of all. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak? Anyone, are we using Zoom today?
No.
We are not using Zoom. Okay, so we will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, questions, comments for Chris? Commissioner Taik.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So what, if I buy 100 acres of land or developing 100 acres of land, walk me through the process of how we charge somebody for that.
Park dedication fees.
This proposal.
So the first factor that we know is, again, the 700 acres of current parklands in Hastings, the number of acres per person that equates to, which is .0314, I think.
Okay.
That's sitting in a different place. And then the average number of people that live in a household in Hastings is 2.37. So we do some multiplication, and then we take the fair market value, the estimated fair market value of that land, and multiply it out by the number of people, or by the number of dwelling units.
So 10 years from now, are we going to have more than 700 acres? Will that number go up?
Yes.
But the ratios will stay the same because we're adding as?
No. What's been proposed in here by the city attorney is that we review this every three years at a minimum.
Okay.
So we stay with real-time data. We're able to adjust to markets whichever way they go, right? If land sales prices skyrocket, we need to be able to adjust to that. If they plummet, we need to be able to adjust to that. If we have a mass exodus of Hastings, we've got to be able to adjust for that. If we have this mass influx, adjust to that.
Okay, so there's things in here that will help us so we don't have to wait 15 years to, okay.
Yeah.
No, it sounds like a much-needed change of what we have, and you probably spend a lot of hours on it, so I appreciate that.
Too many. And my favorite part about this is that it is very transparent, and it's based in data, right?
Right, there's no feelings in it.
Right, it's not me saying this is what I think we need to get. And if a developer does challenge, particularly if they want to challenge the fair market value estimate, then they can hire an appraiser and have that piece of land appraised. And then that's what gets inserted in.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So essentially, what it does is it now quantifies the calculation versus just an arbitrary number under the current ordinance.
Yep.
Commissioner Brown, do you have any other questions or comments?
Yeah, so to your last point, things change out in the world. Leadership, whoever, you know, thinks we need to make a change, this also seems to give us more future flexibility to, like you said, to kind of react to market changes, needs changes, wants, possibly future changes, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it provides us flexibility, and having that mandate to review it every three years at least is a very good starting point, very good starting point.
One follow-up. So as far as the review process itself, would that be staff review? And then you'd bring it back to, say, Planning Commission Council again, just kind of a scheduled three-year, here's our update, this is what we saw, this is how we're going to change, or not at all, right?
Yeah, that would be the routine. And then if, again, if we become aware of drastic changes in any of these data points, we're going to talk about that internally, and we might propose to bring something earlier.
Okay. Yeah, when you do a side-by-side comparison of the current ordinance and the proposal, very apparent how this one makes much more sense.
Yeah.
Because any future developer can come in and say, ah, I see. That's where this number comes from, rather than just, well, where'd that come from?
Mm-hmm.
So it makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
Commissioners, any other questions, comments? All right, and again, we don't have a quorum today, so we won't be taking any action on this particular item.
Yeah.
So would we then table it, or just?
What I'd, yeah, what I'd suggest at this point is just we will bring the comments forward to the city council. Our obligation was to review it and to hold the public hearing, which we did tonight. And since we can't technically make a recommendation, we'll forward comments to the city council.
Okay. And then will we look at this again?
And then when this would come back in three years, we would go through an amendment process or review process, because you know, some of these figures here, with the number of parkland and population, the city are always going to change over time. So we're going to need to plug those in at a minimum, and then take a look as to how this has been working, you know, are there adjustments that need to be made. But as Chris pointed out, I like the system in which this is done. We basically take what we provide for park and carry that obligation forward in that same measure to other properties, where what we have right now, we're taking some estimates on what we should do, and a lot of it's based upon the acreage of the property being subdivided. And since we're in a situation right now where we're seeing apartments and we're seeing smaller lots, that has a, it has a, an effect on our park dedication, which is just, is compounded, because you've got more people and less land.
Got it. Absolutely makes sense. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, and then on that, the last question that I just thought of was, to your point, if it's higher density or smaller lot development, this gives us the lever to pull that, we can then make improvements, say, nearby, right? Or something else in the comprehensive plan, where it's more of a community benefit, right? Rather than falling behind. Chair.
Commissioner Taiken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to, my comment would be that I would be voting for this if we could vote tonight, so I want to pass that on to the city council.
Okay. Same.
And same for me, too, so, yes.
I will put along the support of those present tonight.
Yes, we support it.
We'll couch it in that fashion. Thank you.
Good.
All right, so what happens here, folks, is we will take, the first reading will be before city council, I think, on June 5th, and then second reading on the 24th, because we've got some scheduling, we're doing some different scheduling in June, which I'll share with the council, or Planning Commission later on here.
Okay.
All right.
Chris, thanks.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
Bye. Have a great night, guys.
You, too. All right, and under Other Actions, Community Development Annual Report. John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, Planning Commissioners. Sharing with you tonight, here, is it on my screen? Summary of our Community Development Annual Report, which we have within your packets here. As you know, in 2022, we had a pretty busy year. We had a lot of construction that occurred. There was a lot of items that came before the Planning Commission that are now projects that are in the ground. So I wanted to highlight a few things tonight. When we take a look at overall development within the city in 2022, we had 176 new building permits, $41 million in new valuation. So that's, you know, quite an increase from what we've seen before. Commercial industrial side, we had 161 permits and a substantial increase in that valuation as well. When we look at what the Planning Commission reviewed last year and what's in the ground, we have the current 33 apartments, which is now under construction down on 33rd Street in Vermillion. There'll be 211 units altogether with this project. The first building is now under construction. The second building has already been permitted through our review, and we hear that that might begin construction later on this year. So that's great to see. Next door to that, we've got the Suite Living Senior Apartment Complex, which is right next to it on the corner, 33 million, 32 units of assisted and memory care. All the approvals were granted last year, and we believe that construction will start this year as well on that project. And then we had a larger transformation of Lake Isabel Flats near the UBC lumberyard. This is an application and a project that involved a few different entities here. Our Hedra Board was involved in buying the old UBC site, holding that property for a number of years, and desiring development similar to what we have here, which is an 89-unit apartment building. So we kind of see the before picture here of one of the old buildings on the site, old storage building, and what we're seeing under construction right now. So Planning Commission went through, reviewed this. It was an interesting project because of its proximity next to existing residential area and the fact that it's a large apartment complex near the downtown. So with the addition of this project here and the confluence, we're going to have quite a change to downtown over the next year, by the end of this year, I should say. With that opening up in the next couple of months, and then this opening up by year's end, we're going to have a lot more people and a lot more activity within the downtown area. Also took a look, some other items with Planning Commission, Heritage Ridge Fourth Edition, which was the last phase of single-family and villa lot homes near General Sevan Drive and Fallbrook Drive. So that continues construction. I think at this point, they've had permits now for half of the 116 lots, or either half permits and probably 30, 40 people already moved in there. So that continues to chug along. KFC, we approved the site plans last year. Building permit has been approved, has been picked up by the developer, and we're just waiting on a start date. And that's one thing we get a lot of questions on, is when will that be constructed? We've approved it all, and they have everything in hand to start, so hopefully we'll be hearing that soon. Therapy Ops is under construction near Westview and South Frontage Road. That's an occupational speech physical therapy clinic that should be opened up in the next couple of months. And then we had an interim use permit for United Hero League as well. Planning Commission also took a look at a couple code amendments last year pertaining to use of larger historic buildings and providing flexibility to parking as well. It's kind of a rundown of what we did for permits for last year, taking a look at 22 versus 21. On the single-family, we're pretty comparable on that one. We did have, bought the same number of multifamilies, too. We had a lot more manufactured homes. The area that we have in, on the south end of town, south of 31st Street, that Three Rivers Mobile Home Park, had about 50 or 60 lots available when a new company bought that a couple of years ago, and most of those have been filled up now, which is great to see. On the commercial industrial side, similar types of things. This valuation we have here for commercial industrial, 129, I did recheck that, and slight error on that one, it's probably about 13 million. I added one too many zeros, but still quite an increase over last year. Looking at the building permits over the last 15 years, you can see where we're at today. This is the highest number we've been at since, over the last 15 years. We look historically beyond there, in the mid-2000s, 2003, 2004, we were on 300 permits, so you know, that's where we've been historically. But you can see, since about 2015, 2014, we've had an increase. A lot of this, as you can see from the purple, is being by our apartment, our units that are over 10-plus. Our single-family here is the blue, which has been fairly steady, and then the mobile homes, which is a little more unpredictable. So what we do is we take a look at our lot inventory. What do we have right now that people can build on? What do we have that might be in the hopper, where people have some approvals, and what's out there within a comprehensive plan? So taking a look at our existing lot inventory right now, this is what we have. We've got about 135 lots available right now that someone could build on today. When you take a look at our annual number of permits the last 10 years, that's about 30. So generally, at that trend, we've got about a four-year supply of land, which is, we usually like to have at least three in there. So if you get too much below that one, the market is a little bit different towards that land. The constriction drives prices up, which in a market like this, with interest rates going up and prices going up, we don't need anything else going up. So that's what we've got for availability. The townhome is kind of a strange section right now. We haven't had anything within the last 15 years. We've got a few lots that have been there for a number of years, but nothing new. With that annexation project that we looked at last year, the concept plan with that brought much more townhomes in, so that might happen. I've also, there's also two other plans in which I'm talking to folks right now, which would be townhome projects. So we may see more of that coming in over the next year or two. And considering the available, the price of homes and the affordability, the more affordability a townhome is offered, I think we'll be seeing more of that as we come forward. Had a lot more apartments that have come forward the last couple of years, as you see here. Got about 461 units altogether with that, so that's a number that we've, it seems to fluctuate. Seems like we'll have a boom of apartments for a number of years and then not. We're definitely in that boom period right now. And taking a look at existing or planned development, these are phases in which we've had some approvals, but they need to come back to gain final approvals for. We've got another 176 single-family homes, 48 townhomes, and 320 apartments. So there is room within the next few years if developers desire to bring even more in. And then we get more into the crapshoot here, which is the potential development, taking a look at our comprehensive plan and trying to calculate out what we could have for units in there. So we've got plenty of property that could be developed. So we're not in a situation in which we're out of land to develop. We've got land that's adjacent to us within the townships that can be annexed in, provided we've got a developer and a landowner that would seek to do that. Hedra, I'll say a few things on Hedra. They had a facade improvement grant program they did last year, which they leveraged about $44,000 in 10 projects throughout the city. This is one of the projects downtown that was helped out from them. No, this isn't a wrong place, estimated land supplies, so this is kind of a summary of what I looked at before. Also had a revolving loan fund that we have, that we issued to Spiral Foods last year for about $70,000 in assistance to make their improvements. As I mentioned earlier, the confluence should be open in the next couple of months here. I haven't had a formal open date from them, but they're chugging away. I was in there last week. They're doing finishing work on a lot of the things, within the apartments, cabinetry's inn, within the hotel units. A lot of those are almost complete, and they're doing some of the finishing work to a bar and restaurant area. So it seems like that's a reasonable timeframe that they've established on that. So we will have that happening this year, which will add to the vitality in the downtown, and hopefully more redevelopment things to come forward in the future. And I was, I want to plug in here for our Open to Business Program, which provides free entrepreneurial assistance, and also gap loan financing. There was 165,000 granted to Hastings businesses last year to help with gap financing. So we have that going on. Looking into the future here, with these projects going on, what we've got going on in the future. As you know, we had the annexation approved down on 316 Michael. We predict that that is going to come forward with a site plan and plating, hopefully later on this year. That's 450-plus units that would be coming forward. So we'll be looking at the EAW of that later on the summer, and then some of the land use entitlements, I believe, in the summer or fall. So that could be a large number of units coming online. The homes for that, maybe 2024, early, it's probably 2025 and up, so we've got those in the hopper. We've been having other conversations with individuals that are seeking infill developments for townhomes and other items, as well as conversations we've had with individuals that are seeking potentially annexation of new lands elsewhere within town. So what we have under construction is great. What we have in the hopper is good as well. And the conversations that I'm having with folks that are looking at future development is very good. So trends are there, that we're in a good place right now. We're also working on a couple of long-term items right now. The Vermillion Street Plan from Mendat, in which they're planning reconstruction of the entire roadway in 2027, where we'll be finishing up the public process of that and be bringing that project document forward, the plan forward to council in the next month or so. And with that, we're planning on some redevelopment along 61. Hedra has bought the properties between 4th and 5th Street on the west side of 61, including the Old River Town Liquors Building, the Old Country Knights Building, an old home, and we're closing on the Dick's Barbershop Building at the end of the month. With the Dick's Barbershop Building, you won't see much change to that in the next couple of years. We have a leaseback that we're doing with the present tenants, the barber shop and the residential tenant, so they'll stay put for the next couple of years. And then at that point, we'll be making decisions on redevelopment of that. We'll likely be looking at a project per our Vermillion Street guidelines, which would have commercial on the bottom, residential on top of that one. So we're filling in some of the boxes that are on the redevelopment side. So appreciate the time and effort that the commission has given over the last year and more to come with the decisions and contemplations they have with new development. So I can stand for any questions.
Okay. Thanks, John. Commissioner, anyone? Just, when I was reviewing this, page 10 kind of stuck out at me. We don't review building permits here, Commissioner, but still, page 10 was pretty eye-opening on the reinvestment that people are making in their existing homes.
Yes.
Not to be understated either, especially in terms of valuation. So it's a good sign, leads me to believe that people are, you know, reinvesting in their homes and...
That is true.
Yeah, staying in Hastings. I thought that was pretty impressive. It's on page 10, if you're looking at it. Pretty consistent between last year and, well, this year was...
Yeah, the only big change we had from last year, we, there was a, there was a new, there was an energy requirement last year that required people to switch out, I forgot what it was, thermostats or some other electrical device, which led to, you know, a tripling of our electrical permits for very small little items last year. So that was kind of an anomaly.
And so on page 12, that potential development chart?
Mm-hmm.
Those are the informal talks that you've been having with different entities?
Yeah, the ones that are showing here are actually, there's been some approvals granted by council and planning commission, like for Glendale Heights, for example. We approved the subdivision years ago. However, there's one lot left in which I think a 40-unit apartment building could be constructed. So that would have to come back for site plan to do it, but we've given some initial approval. So that's generally what that list is, is there's been some approvals granted by Planning Commission Council, but there's still another step of approvals necessary prior to construction.
Sure. Okay. Great. Commissioner Taiken or Brown? Comments, questions? Very impressive.
I'll say some, yeah, I was going to say the same thing, like, looking back, we did a lot.
Yeah, there's a, there are a few things going on.
My memory must be fading, because I don't remember the stuff until you bring it up. I'm like, oh, yeah, that happened, that happened. So it's great to see that this city continues to thrive and renew itself.
Good.
Thank fellow commissioners for helping that.
And what do you think of the process? Any kind of a plan undergoes from the very first time the application is made to fruition? A lot of people.
Yes.
That happened. Staff, you know, commission, city council, you name it. So very impressive. Thank you.
No problem at all. So as far as other business goes, gentlemen, we've got a meeting scheduled for two weeks on the June 12, or three weeks, excuse me, because there's five Mondays in May. So our next meeting will be June 12th in three weeks. I do have two items already on there. We've got two small site plans in addition to Regina Assisted Living, and in addition to Cota County Law Enforcement. So we'll be looking at those two for sure, and whatever else might come up in the next couple of weeks. With the schedule that we have in June, July, it's going to be a little bit different. We've got the Juneteenth holiday, which is the third Monday in June. And then we've got the 4th of July following, 4th of July following on a Tuesday, a couple weeks later. So what the city council has done is they are going to meet on the 19th, which is the third Monday in, but they're not meeting on the, is normal, on the third Monday in June, but instead moving on the 4th Monday in June, which is a scheduled Planning Commission night, which would be, I think, the 24th. So long story short, in June, we'll have a meeting on the 12th. We will not be having a meeting on the 24th, because that's a planning com- June, but instead moving on the fourth Monday in June, which is a scheduled Planning Commission night, which would be, I think, the 24th. So long story short, in June, we'll have a meeting on the 12th. We will not be having a meeting on the 24th, because that's a Planning Commission night, and then we'll be back to our normal schedule back in July.
And that'd be the 26th.
Yep, so 26th, no Planning Commission. That'll be city council that night.
Okay.
Because the city council is, has canceled the 19th meeting and the July 3rd meeting, and is going to hold one meeting in between there.
So our next meeting would be July 10th?
Our next one will be June 12th.
No, I mean, I'm sorry, after June.
Yeah, after that would be, I think, July 10th.
July 10th, okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right, perfect.
And that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, is there any other business? All right, well, we'll go ahead and make a motion to adjourn. No, we don't really need one. Are we in consensus that we can adjourn? All right, we are in consensus. We are going to adjourn. Thank you.